Welcome to downtown Phoenix. I'm in spot number eighteen. Tight little spot. If somebody parks, a long vehicle parks here, I'll never get out. There's a long way back here, forget it. So there was this American Institute of Architects, I don't know what, for what building or what company or whatever, but seems to be following escorting the young lady to work or something. We're gonna pay for number eighteen. Get some video evidence. Let's get the time to... The date is, was it the thirteenth? Yes, March thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, eight thirty-two AM. I parked in spot number eighteen. And I'm gonna go put some money in the box over here for number eighteen, zero to twelve hours. Go fit in there. You gotta really jam it. Jam it in there, make sure nobody can get it back out. Security guard is with the signal. Is she gonna offer to escort me? Yeah, she sees a young lady come and then she escorts her. I think that's what happens. How's it going? Can I get an escort too? There's some scary people around here, you know? Welcome to America, right?
I know.
Hey, which way? City Hall?
City Hall.
You should know these things. Now I wanna see your credentials.
Hey, and not my job, no.
Yeah.
There, but across the street from there.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the municipal court.
Right.
And I think City Hall is gonna be across the street from them, right on Jefferson.
You're wrong, it's just past there. I was just testing your knowledge.
Well, I'm lost.
They should make, yeah, they should make you guys tour guides too, right? And the biggest question, where do you find free parking? I don't mind walking a half mile, but...
Right. Free parking, no free parking.
No free parking? Nice building. That's the municipal court building. Chicago at the Orpheum. Longest-running American musical in Broadway history. Man, look at that dude.
I'd like to just go like one day, like a week would be paradise, but a week without seeing cops all over the fucking place.
This is the Woodland Community Garden. The sign that says, "Mercy, your life has value." Hope, that's always good. And peace. Please.
Thank you. And we realize that the meeting got started until now. My name is Noel Rosen. I'm here to support Phoenix PD and all of our officers. I know that there's a lot of people that want and are gonna push for a citizen oversight committee. I think that's wrong. We already have the Public Safety Committee, so you really don't need oversight because you've already got it. But the fact remains is, they wanna tie, the reason they want citizen oversight is to tie the hands of our police officers. Now, I back our law enforcement, all of the members of law enforcement that are here tonight today. I wanna say thank you for your service. It's valued. I value it. The bottom line is, citizen oversight is just another way for the other side, the ones that are anti-cop, open borders, pro-illegal, socialist, communists. They wanna get their own people on these committees because they're not elected. Okay, these are appointing positions. But the fact remains, we do not need these types of people tying the hands of our police officers. Let the police do their jobs because they're our city soldiers and we need to have their backs. But I just wanna let Phoenix PD know and all of law enforcement know that there's one man that stands here before you today that has your back. Thank you and stay safe out there.
Thank you very much. And with that, I believe you have the Vice Bear on the phone. Vice Bear, are you there?
Yep, I am.
All righty, and we're waiting for Councilmember Bob, I mean, Nubelsohn. At this time, we have the approval of the minutes.
A little bit of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All righty, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion is approved. Items number two and three, that's for information only.
Here, leave it. Don't you, item five and six.
All right, so right now what we'll do is, I'd like to pull item number four until we have Councilmember Nubelsohn in the room with us. So we can put that past, and then we'll just continue with item number five and six.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, Mike Kurtmark from the Police Department. I'm here to talk about the public records fee item on the agenda. You may recall that back in 2016, the Police Department participated in a Advanced Phoenix Kaizen project that looked to enhance our public records process. At our worst, we were experiencing a twenty-two-month backlog with our public records. But due to the dedication of employees such as Ms. Jill Selaya, Jessica Rothschild, and Pete Alonso and their teams, we have now reduced that twenty-two-month backlog to just two weeks. I think we would all agree this is quite an undertaking. In fiscal year seventeen eighteen alone, our public records section processed over sixty-five thousand public records requests. Of those, thirteen thousand were delivered through the mail. What we are proposing is implementing a new process that should go online, May of nineteen, that will allow us to operate an online portal for public records requests. So what this will look like going forward is that citizens from the comfort of their own home, if they so choose, could submit a public records request, or if they were so inclined, they could come in to our code enforcement section and submit it online. And what the online portal will look like is a typical shopping cart experience that we are all accustomed to as we order items online. So that the top ten items that are received for public records would be immediately available. Individuals could click on that and thereby expedite their process. What we are seeking approval from Public Safety today for is the implementation of a five-dollar fee at the front end of this process. We worked with the city auditor to identify fourteen valley agencies to see what they do. And as we looked at these fourteen valley agencies, we saw that they do provide an upfront, or require an upfront fee. The average was six dollars and forty-two cents, the median was five dollars. So cities such as Tempe, Chandler, Scottsdale, all charge five dollars on the front end, which is what we are seeking permission to charge as well. To be clear, there's a whole schedule on what items cost for public records. So if an individual submitted a public records request for three pages, we still will adhere to the twenty-four cent per page fee. So if an individual applied online, requested an item for those three pages, submitted their five-dollar fee, we would reverse them for whatever amount that was under that five dollars. Whatever amount is over that five dollars, then there would be ability for the individual to pay that item online as well. Again, it's something that I think most of us that do online shopping are very familiar with, so it won't be foreign to our customers. But this also will allow for specificity for public records requests, so we get away from the any or all that are very, very time-consuming for our public records staff. We believe this five-dollar upfront fee will improve customer service. It will allow for quicker turnaround times and greatly enhance and allow for a much more efficient process. That concludes my presentation. I'd be welcome to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any other options online? Is there a certain people that do not know my name?
So, Mr. Chairman, if you may, I would like to ask, people could still come in to the public records section on the ramp if they so choose. It's the mailing-in process that is very cumbersome for our staff. So if somebody wanted to, they could come in line. And to be clear, if the record were immediately available, they wouldn't have to come back, they could look at it, it was something the staff could provide quickly. And also, what this portal will do, oftentimes there are multiple requests for a record. So if the request has already been fulfilled, that item could be moved through the portal twenty-four hours a day, or if somebody came down to the public records section and already been fulfilled, they could just view it right there or receive it right there in person.
And what are the payment options? How would they pay it?
So again, it's the five-dollar flat fee. What we would hope is that you do it by credit card. I would imagine some people don't have access to credit cards, so they can do it other means, cash or check.
Any other questions? I believe we have Councilmember Nubelsohn on the phone.
Yes, thank you. No, no questions coming.
All righty, with that, heads on next round.
I would move this forward for staff's recognition. I think this will help expedite the making easier access for the public to get those items.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All righty, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Thank you. Now we're on the throne. Yes, I'm sorry, there's actually a card on that from Michael. And also Michelle, sorry about that.
I'm here to oppose a five-dollar fee for a very simple reason. Our Police Department's probably been one of the most inefficient police departments in the country, if not the state, as part of getting our records. Twenty-two months has been voted by, also we've quoted much to thirty-six months. We are now asking Police Department that before this was an dangerous, incusible violation of laws. I'm gonna read the ARS. Access to public records being denied in custodian. Failed to promptly respond to requests, productivity of public records failed to provide request personally at intensive of records. I have requests that are still over a year. Several requests are still waiting over a year, so we are asking Police Department to show them that it has not been a priority who made great strides, which I'm very happy about. But all of a sudden to go from great strides to now requesting a five-dollar fee upfront for who has been shown to be inefficient and like negatively criminally inefficient, to now ask for a five-dollar fee upfront, doesn't make any sense. I think they need to earn some more trust, show some more accountability, source more transparency. But we can go around asking people to pay upfront for things that take more than one. Things that take much more than thirty days than the ARS stats that they're denied to have to give them a reason why. I can tell you personally that it is currently nine fifteen in the morning. If you want to get a public records request and it be out by now, you show up at seven thirty. I know three people by face, they know me by name. And if I want to hand my public records request, I will be up by ten o'clock if I show up at seven thirty. If I show up at eight o'clock, it will be closer to eleven. And that is what you have to do if you want public records requests. It means today as of now. So that's just an inefficient system, so I don't understand how this, I would approve that system and how they can be trusting the request. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Michelle Rose.
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for accepting me to speak. My name is Michelle Rose. I am opposed to the upfront fees for public records. I really like the idea of the online convenience that can still be in place without fees. But I oppose any barriers to the freedom of information and I support transparency. And while five dollars doesn't really sound like much money, it can be to our working-class families, to people who are unemployed. And it also sets the precedent and opens the door to charging even more money that can be even more cost prohibitive. So I would ask you to reconsider even though it's already placed to vote, but I oppose the upfront fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael and Michelle. I apologize if I didn't see the cards here. I've been out of order, so... With that, would anybody would like to reconsider their vote on the last item? If there's not, that in case. We're now on the towing, on item number six.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee. My name is Denise Olson. I'm the Chief Financial Officer. With me today is Jim Campion, who's also a permanent officer for the city, and the law office, and Chief Mike Kurtmark. So the purpose today of this presentation is to talk to you of the background information on where we're at with towing services in the city of Phoenix. So as you know, the city of Phoenix provides towing services, and what we do is we tow cars that are involved in accidents. There's abandoned vehicles, illegal parking vehicles, and also we do law enforcement impoundments. Because our city's so large, we have four towing zones and we have three separate vendor contracts. These contracts will expire at the end of the calendar year. The fees in these zones range from fifteen to twenty-nine dollars. And as far as the procurement history of this, we did a procurement in 2018. The county, the city brought forward a recommendation to the city council, and the city council chose not to approve that recommendation. So then we went forward with contract extensions, and again, the contracts are good until December of 2019. Now, the point we wanna make with the 2018 procurement is we did test the market, and so we have a good understanding of the vendors that provide towing services for a city of our size. The next thing I wanna do is just briefly talk about the fees associated with towing. And this chart is also in a path that is hard to see those numbers. So we have four zones. We have the vendor DB Towing for Zone A. The first column in this table shows the level one tow fees. These tow fees go to the vendors, so the revenue collected from these tow fees ranging from fifteen to twenty-nine dollars. That revenue goes to the vendors. The second column is the one-day storage fee. Now, that's fifteen dollars and that's set by state law. And again, those revenues go to the vendors. Then the last column is the administrative fee. That's a hundred and fifty dollars. That is also set by the state. That fee is applied only to vehicles related to impoundments. And so the city gets that revenue. Last year, we collected about a million dollars. And then, in addition to this, we have in our contracts, we have a thirty-four percent profit sharing on any sales of scrap metal or abandoned vehicles. And that also brings about a million dollars to the city. So we have about a two-million-dollar program that is supported with these revenues, and that goes towards the Police Department to support these programs. So moving forward, as I said, these contracts expire at the end of the calendar year. So we need to come up with a plan to provide towing services going into the future. So what the Finance Department has done is we've worked with the Police Department and we've come up with three options to discuss with this council to determine if it should be back in, and moving forward, past December of 2019. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jim Campion to talk through these options.
Thank you, Denise. Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, as Denise mentioned, we're gonna talk about some options. Option one is we would conduct a procurement. It's a procurement method with a mandatory qualifications for vendors to demonstrate capacity to handle the volume of tows in this contract. The price per tow and percent of auction split will be the determining factor to award by zone. And one of the critical components of this contract is a storage facility within each zone, so there's a twenty-minute response time can be met so officers aren't standing there waiting. That's option one. Option two, contract for towing management. In this option, in our RFP process, would be issued to solicit for a towing management company that would manage all aspects of towing services for the city. The towing management company would hire experienced, state-licensed towing companies to meet the demand. Little delay in my clicker, sorry. City staff would perform oversight on this function for the towing management program. We called around and had some conversations with different cities. Cities using this model in the western United States are San Diego, San Francisco, Las Vegas, Denver, San Antonio. Final option is a long-term extension to the current contract. This would require an exception to a procurement code approved by city council management. As Denise mentioned, the market has been tested, and these tow companies appear to be the most qualified, responsive, responsible bidders. We would work closely with the city auditor to establish towing rates for the local market to set for the new contract, for the extension. And the contract would include escalation clauses. Those are the three options, and we'll discuss those when Mike Kurtmark is done with his presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee. There were changes to state law in effect, or responsive passage of House Bill twenty-one sixty-nine as of January first of this year. Just wanted to take a minute to talk about the impacts of those changes. So those changes were specific to Arizona law statutes Title twenty-eight, which is the traffic and transportation laws for the state of Arizona. And with respect to this conversation, there were two changes that are notable. First off, now driving on suspended license is a civil offense as opposed to a criminal offense. Additionally, what that means, the second change, is that we no longer tow for vehicles who are operators who are operating them with a suspended license. To provide context, in fiscal year seventeen eighteen, Phoenix Police Officers towed approximately thirty-five thousand vehicles. Of those thirty-five thousand vehicles, five thousand were for violation of driving on a suspended license. And the statute that allows us to tow those vehicles required to be towed, those vehicles is ARS twenty-eight thirty-five eleven. So Ms. Olson addressed the revenue portion. The towing fees are what support the program for our vehicle impound detail. The five thousand we were towed, the median impact because of the administrative fee is seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And as Ms. Olson referred to, there's a thirty-four percent auction split that comes back to the Police Department, so we believe the total revenue impact could be above one million dollars. In preparation for that, what we are prepared to do is to hold vacant five staff positions in our vehicle impound detail out of nineteen total positions. We still need, we believe, the additional fourteen positions to manage the thirty thousand other tows that have come about out of illegal parking, accidents, abandoned vehicles, et cetera. But to be clear, the impact from revenue will be upwards of a million dollars, and that will ultimately have to be absorbed by the general fund to maintain those staff positions. There is some ongoing legislative discussion at the State Capitol right now that is just in the discussion stages. We're not entirely sure how that will affect this matter going forward, but it's important to understand that the Office of Government Relations is monitoring that discussion at the State Capitol. That concludes our presentation.
With that, if there are any of my colleagues have any questions? We have two cards for the nukes out there in the public. Should we take those first and then I'll go back to my colleagues? We have Paul.
Good morning, Mr. Gilbert. Thank you for your address. My name is Paul Gilbert, seven oh on North Porte, Port Street. I represent BB Towing. And we're here to speak in vigorous support of opposition. Option three, we were the towing company that last time during the procurement process was selected by your staff. And frankly, that was an onerous, long process that I don't think anybody wants to repeat in them. Therefore, option one is totally unacceptable. Option two has never been tried. We don't think there's any need for it because here there are reasons only three towing companies that qualify. So we don't really need a manager to manage the operation. And option three basically provides that we extend the three contracts and negotiate an escalation clause so that we can keep up with our expenses. I might add parenthetically, and importantly, that we've cooperated, in fact, all three towing companies have cooperated with the city. So we've extended the current contract without any increase in fees. So we've been operating under an outdated contract, an outdated fee base, and it's time to change that. And we think option three is the right way to go. It gives the city all the protections that it needs. Gosh, my mother must be calling me. So, before I was so rudely interrupted, we support option three and would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Gilbert? Thank you so much. See, I have your mother first. Elaine?
Good morning. I'm Elaine Lam with BB Towing. For the past six years, BB has developed a very well-working relationship with the city of Phoenix, its Police Department, and the citizens. Last year, BB invested thousands after a war, only to have it taken away. Having one previous RFP for price and performance, we view the three options before you as such. The IFB options we fear would be de-shodding. The last RFP left to stay on the process, and we feel again there would be lawyer involvement and another long, drawn-out process utilizing wasted time and resources that everyone from the city, the vendors, even the council experienced. The towing management company, in our opinion, lists far more cons than pros. First cost to the consumer is extraordinary, trying to track vehicles to an excessive amount of tow yards, and more lots for vehicle inspections. We feel it would be more costly to the city. It is also our understanding that most likely under this method, Phoenix would lose auction revenue. More cost to the citizens, less revenue to the city. Sounds like lose-lose. The final option, a long-term extension with the current vendors, appears to be the most feasible solution to us. All existing vendors have developed results that obviously work. Each one of us have proven we have the ability and experience to perform, meet, and sometimes exceed the demands of the city's towing contract. BB Towing will look forward to negotiating the terms of this option. Lastly, we would like to propose a recommendation to aid the city in the loss of revenue due to the amount of modifications of ARS twenty-eight thirty-five eleven. Currently, the city of Georgia towing contract provides a fifty-dollar processing fee to the towing company for vehicles taken to its facilities. With the loss of revenue to the city and the loss of revenue for the tow company for fewer tows, we propose an agreed-upon processing fee to be charged for the inbounded vehicles and the city of Phoenix and the tow companies share in this collection. Tracking can easily be done with an added column to the daily release report.
Any final comments?
I'm sorry?
We need to wrap it up, your time is over.
Yeah, I'll be good on that.
All right, thank you so much. Any comments for my colleagues? Yes, Mayor?
Councilmember Mendosa? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I would like to put a motion to go with option three, but in addition to working with the city auditor, I would like to see the city auditor and staff to work with the towing company. If that would be my motion, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I understand, she's going for option three? And to work, to negotiate? Okay. I will second that because I feel very strongly, we have four vendors who have performed very well for us. They have, which had a long previous process the last time. I would hate to see that happen. I think the second option you presented is just adding another layer of cost, which is unnecessary. They function very well without it. So I agree that it should have extension, staff negotiating a fair price. We can't expect the towing companies to lose money and we may have to look at how many people, people can re-staff the processes, but I think it's very important to see what the fair be for with annual towing duties. And then taking into consideration any legislative changes that may still be coming in prior this negotiation. So I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion on second. Vice Mayor, any comments?
No.
All right, Billy Thompson, I would add, maybe look at an option of Howard, if that's in the cost course up, to see if that helps out with the cost. Would that, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And now we're back to item number four. You know, this is for information only and I have some cards here in front of me. I'd like to see the cards first. We have some time don't need to speed, here you got there. We actually have one, two, and this card. So that's actually a little bit of work. Let's do this next time. I think there are actually four cards. Okay, I have Ben. Who else?
Amy. There's a card from Amy also that might get added after.
All right. I'll look up these. So we actually have four cards.
We're discussing number four, you also have Michelle Rose. It's on.
That's off, that's, don't need any time, can't?
No, not don't need.
Oh, no, correct. These are just individuals that don't need extra time for answers.
Thank you.
All right. It's on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mayor. My name is Steve Cervallak. I'm an attorney and I live in District Three. And as you noted, others donated my time. I represent police officers throughout the state of Arizona, and as part of that representation, I've been from Mojave County to Apache County to Fanao County to Huma County, and I've interacted with dozens of law enforcement agencies. Most of my practice is concentrated here in Maricopa County, and I've actually had the opportunity to speak with many of the men and women in blue that are over here today as part of my representation of Phoenix police officers and supervisors. Today, I'd like to talk about three main topics as it relates to effective oversight of police departments. I'll cover Phoenix's current procedures, other procedures both in Arizona and across the country, and finally, the concept of truth finding and community trust. The takeaway of my presentation is this, I would hope that everyone in this room is committed to truth finding, to effective processes, and to decisions based on facts and best practices. So first, I'd like to discuss Phoenix's current procedures. This committee should know that Phoenix's procedure serves as a model of transparency and civilian involvement. Subject matter experts conduct investigations, but they don't reach conclusions on their own. Major incidents are reviewed often repeatedly by panels that include civilian involvement. The presentation that you'll hear from Mr. Dehoney outlines three principles that civilian review can address. Those principles are review focus, auditor monitor, and investigations. Here in Phoenix, civilian engagement for the practices already in place addresses each and every one of those principles with multiple levels of review. So for the review focus principle, the department long ago established chief's advisory boards. These engaged civilians hear directly from the community members that they represent, and the department regularly addresses these concerns, up to and including the involvement of executive staff. As to the auditing and monitoring function, there is undoubtedly effective and engaged civilian processes to hold sworn investigators accountable. Civilians on the use of force board and on the discipline review board are free to ask questions of investigators, involved employees, and even supervisors. As to investigative principles, civilians can and sometimes do ask investigators for follow-up on sensitive cases or where the facts need further development. Also, on the investigation side, for officer-involved shootings and for in custody deaths, civilians at the county attorney's office are right there during scene investigations, and a panel of those outside experts actually review each and every critical incident. When they have questions, they can and do go back and talk to members of the police department to ask for follow-up. What this means is that all evidence is gathered and all reports are written, knowing that civilian review can and will occur, knowing that questions will be asked, and knowing that objective fact finding is critical to making decisions based upon objective evidence and true factual reports. Phoenix's model is actually similar to the model used by the state bar to regulate lawyers like me. For lawyers, staff attorneys at the bar, conduct fact finding and issue a report and recommendation. Final action cases are reviewed by a panel that contains a mix of lawyers and civilians to review whether or not a complaint goes forward. So to bring this conversation back to policing and to what the council should respectfully consider, is whether investigations uncover the facts and whether there's a meaningful review of the department's actions that the community can trust. I'm proud to say that Phoenix has this. It has robust fact finding. It has meaningful civilian review. And it has an investigations and discipline process that's based upon finding the truth that all those involved can trust and defend. And in any good review process, there's no room for outside pressure. The state bar wouldn't want outside forces to compromise a discipline case. We wouldn't want a court system where politics or influence can hide results. The engaged civilians at all levels in the Phoenix police discipline process take their jobs seriously, they avoid outside pressure, and the results, while not perfect, are remarkable. So this brings me to my final concept. Community trust is based upon truth. I don't always agree with Chief Williams or the decisions of some members of her staff, but what's truly impressive is that she's dedicated consistently and always to a process that stands up to scrutiny. In fact, each and every internal investigation, each and every shooting and critical incident investigation is subject to public scrutiny. This is actually relatively unique in the United States. This isn't the case in many states, including my original home state of New York, and I personally believe that this transparency serves the public trust well. And speaking of public trust, it doesn't begin and end with oversight. In Phoenix, engaged and concerned members of the public are invited to participate and learn about their department in ways that are unheard of in other locations. The department has a civilian police academy and a ride-along program that's groundbreaking and helping those who have a sincere interest in learning about the department actually engage. So with that, I'd like to reiterate that Phoenix already has civilian review in multiple levels, that is, industry leading, from civilian involvement in active chief's advisory boards to the use of force board to the discipline review board, and finally, to an active, engaged, appointed by the mayor, dedicated civil service board. This model of blending civilian involvement with expert investigations is a best practice across industries and serves the city well. And this process, combined with Arizona's public records laws and the department's engagement with those that are truly interested in bringing helpful, or in being helpful partners to make our community better, allows the truth to be determined in Phoenix Police Department investigations and maintains public trust. So finally, I'd like to leave you all with this thought. Please tread carefully. As I said at the beginning, I live in Phoenix, I work all over the state, and the Phoenix Police Department has the best, far none investigative and review process of anywhere in Arizona. I firmly believe that you, our elected officials, should be proud of that and should not rush into making any decisions that could diminish the effectiveness and the truth finding of what we already have. Do you have any questions? I will take them, but if not, thank you for your consideration.
Any questions? Thank you so much. Go ahead, Scott Woods. Jeremy, your next.
Good morning, Chairman, Subcommittee members. I come to you this morning in friendship and in fear. I fear the police because of the 2014 incident of intimidation shortly after I became involved in the work associated with the death of Remain Brisbane. Obviously, the police were in fear of me because they threatened my existence. At officer.com, in an article entitled "Five Fears of Police Work" dated June 27, 2018, writer Jim Knapp of Law Enforcement Today listed as one of the temporary fears due to the changing culture, quote, "The expanding power and opinions of civilian workforce." You can hear this fear expressed in news interviews with Phoenix Law Enforcement Association Chief President Ken Crane. I believe what is stopping our city from fulfilling a mission is, quote, "Study governance over the police department," is community and council's fear of police, because otherwise, if the fear of police that the mayor, council, and city manager heard some citizens express can be proven and re-accused to be real in some cases, there would have been expediency in the process. You and I are lucky that we don't face this reality every morning of our lifetime, as do all people of color in our city. But as officer-involved shootings increase disproportionately affect our blacks and Hispanics, we must all wake up and act expediently to provide a civilian review board to proactively prevent more deaths by identifying misconduct of officers whose behavior is a red flag violence. Thank you.
And after Jeremy, it'll be Michael.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Jeremy Healthgod. I, as most of you know, have served for the past six years in the City's Human Relations Commission and was proud to serve on the City Manager's Community and Police Trust Initiative Task Force. And I'll ask Mr. Chair, if I may, I think I'm the only CPTI member actually here today, if I may have a little bit of latitude on time, because there are a number of things I'd like to address. To begin with, I just looked at, I found it interesting, the report of Chief Yonar to Assistant City Manager Dehoney on CPTI's recommendations is dated March 11, 2016. Three years ago, this past Monday, that report was delivered, and I think that illustrates the slowness of the process that has gotten us here to this study of civilian review and oversight based on CPTI's recommendation, which in and of itself doesn't actually recommend a specific step moving forward. And I'm here today to encourage each of you to bring back to your colleagues on the full counsel a recommendation that this needs to move forward and move forward rapidly. I want to mention that the notion of civilian review or oversight in whatever form it takes, I think, is misconstrued often as being designed to restrict the officers in our police department, when indeed it's exactly the opposite. This is about building trust and accountability, which ultimately, at the end of the day, are designed to empower our officers. Our officers are at their best when they have the trust of the community, when community members are going to share information, when they're going to report crime, when they're going to have officers' backs, when they are going to warn officers of danger, when they're going to keep the department informed of matters that should be of concern to them for their safety. When that trust is eroded, when that trust and accountability isn't there, it creates a dangerous situation that puts not only our community members at risk, but also puts our officers at risk. I want to also dispel a myth that civilian oversight is about getting officers. If we look at what the city's civil service board has done in its history, there are countless incidents where the civilian oversight has actually reduced and overturned disciplinary actions against officers, including reversing terminations of officers in several cases. So the presumption that a civilian review component is going to be some kind of witchcraft, I think, is already disproven by the history.
Jeremy, you have another 20 seconds or so, can?
Okay. I also, and then I'll wrap up, what I want to mention, that the structure of our city is such that oversight is tricky, because in the structure of our city charter, our police chief, and with all due respect to Chief Williams, who has done a remarkable, incredible job in increasing transparency and community outreach, ultimately, the responsible party is our city manager, not our elected officials. The mayor and council can only instruct the city manager, hire and fire the city manager. So there isn't that direct line of accountability to any kind of elected oversight as well. I hope this is just the beginning of this conversation, there's more to explore, but I think we are at a stage, as a city of this size, that we need to see more than information, but action on this particular item. I would very much urge each of you to please continue in that direction. Happy to take any questions if there are any.
Any questions for my colleagues? No questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Michael.
Morning, Chairman Okafor, Mayor, members of the Subcommittee, Britt London, president of the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. It's probably obvious why I'm here to speak, as in opposition to the civilian review board, but I do want to note that my association is open-minded and has a positive regard for the concerns of our community. After reading the informational report by the city manager's office, I had some concerns and questions. One of which was the costs that would be associated with the civilian review board. I believe all three models that were presented do have a cost associated with them. Probably the greatest cost would be in the investigative model, and that's without any litigation that would follow if it did have the authority to discipline. But my estimation is that it would be about $10,000 to $15,000 just for personnel and a place to hold the meetings and mud. Just curious where that money would come from and would that affect taxpayers? Another concern that I have as it pertains to my membership is the potential for release of private information, as well as board members with a personal agenda that may become divisive within our community. I believe that the city of Phoenix and our police department want to impart a sense of confidence to our community, and they take great efforts to do so now. As you've heard, and I'll reiterate a little bit, we have a discipline review board that has two community members that sit on it, we have a use of force board that has three community members that sit on it. What is the civilian review board going to accomplish that those processes don't accomplish now? And if there are problems with the processes we have in place, have we taken any action to correct them? I've sat and presented at many of them, and I can tell you that I too believe that our department does a good job. We have a strong professional standards bureau, they do good investigations most of the time. And I do think that it is something to be considered when someone stands up at this podium and addresses this committee and say that they speak for the community, they want to imply that there is unity amongst all the residents, but I don't believe that's the case. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We have Ramon, and we have a bit of time to choose.
Councilmembers, I want to speak on item number four. My name is, actually, I have, yeah, two times. My name is Ramon, and I'm a member of the Arizona Four People's Campaign. And I come as a concerned community member to demand a solution for a very serious public safety crisis. I, as a resident of the Phoenix, and many community members do not feel safe in the presence of the police. I feel that one of my young family members, my- I fear that one of my young family members, my friends, myself, will be next to be harmed or killed during the police interaction.
It was kind of nice to see some community members here at the council meeting asking for a civilian review board. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of opposition because they don't want accountability. They just want to be able to make as much money as they can and do whatever they feel is necessary at the expense of people.